It won't work.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera, I appreciate you. Councilmember Fails.
Oh, I just wanted to, um, take a moment to just, um, express my gratitude to to Waste Management. You know, you all have been involved in this city, you know, since the nineteen eighties. And also, when I worked for, uh, the mayor's office for four years, we did a lot of cleanup operations and your team was always very responsive with getting drivers out, so I did want to express gratitude to you. And also to your drivers on a personal level. I'm not sure what's gonna happen, you know, during this transition for those drivers. But, um, I do know I'm wishing for the best for them and just wanted to express our heartfelt gratitude. Thank, thank, I appreciate that.
And I'm not gonna ask you to come back up, but I'm gonna make a comment as you go take your seat and say that, um, I got a chance to know, uh, Mr. Vernon when I came, but, um, knew really the whole team through my relationship with them, um, Jordan Johnson, um, as a state legislator. And they were certainly responsive, uh, and part of a, you know, huge public company that has seen success, uh, all over the country for sure. And I appreciate, um, the way that, uh, Waste Management, uh, comported themselves throughout the process, even when we set out to, um, open it up for a competitive process. And just thank you for your professionalism now and in the future. Thank you. Um, the next person to speak is Brainard Bivens. Brainard? Bivens? With Waste Management? Forgive me for always saying it wrong.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Brainard Bivens. I'm with the Arkansas Community Organizations. Good afternoon. The reason why I'm here, we're, uh, we're the members of Arkansas Community Organizations, present this letter for all to support sustainable recycling and acts to be recognized as the catalyst in the community to assist in recycling. And we ask that you consider this as a part of the renewal contract with whatever company you decide to use. Uh, we're, uh, in favor of recycling for a lot of obvious reasons. It's been a long time coming. Uh, we also ask that the city maybe be the spearhead and maybe start some recycling efforts along the city with the, uh, offices and things like that, just to make a show of, uh, support for the, the overall recycling. And we're curious as far as was this considered in, in the awarding of the contract? And also, is it gonna be available for the citizens? Or if not, is there any plan on implementing some type of, uh, beginning stages of recycling for the future? We're just encouraging you all to consider this for the benefit of the planet. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bivens. And I do want you to know that, um, that was definitely a part of the process. We did ask for numbers that would include recycling from everyone, uh, that bid. And just so we can see what that cost differential looks like, um, with the intent and possibly in the future, uh, securing those services, whether they be curbside or drop off. But the beginning point was to see who provided those services, how much they would cost, how they would be provided, uh, so that we can really get a temperature at this point from the community on the desire for those services, the willingness to pay additional dollars, uh, or at least, uh, utilize, uh, drop off services and what that will cost. So we, if there was a, a process in place to at least be, to begin to look at that, and I think that the next step is to help whet the appetite of the citizens of this city to realize, um, how, um, helpful that could be in achieving sustainability in our city. Um, that said, we will now call the meeting to order and begin with invocation. Reverend Travante Calhoun of Rose Hill Missionary Baptist Church is here with us to help lead us in the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Shall we bow our heads? Almighty gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this day and for the privilege of gathering in service of the city of Pine Bluff. We ask that you bless this meeting, bless our leaders, and bless all those who call this community home. And we pray that you grant us the wisdom to make the decisions that are just, that provide unity and also cause us to work together for the common good and for the courage to face the challenges before us with integrity, fairness, and guide every discussion, every decision, and every action so that we may promote justice, progress, and peace for all. And we extend our hand of protection upon our city. And while we ask for these blessings, Father God, we continue to serve you in a faithful and just capacity in every single way. These are the blessings in our Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Calhoun. And now we'll be, we will be led in the, in the Pledge of Allegiance by cadets from Watson Chapel, Junior ROTC. And if each of us, each of you, before we get started, could just share your name and grade, and then you can lead us.
Good evening. We are the cadets from the Watson Chapel JROTC program, and I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Grigsby.
I am Cadet Captain Malia Prygen.
I'm Cadet Captain Jakimion Johnson.
And we will, we will now do the pledge on the count of three. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated.
Thank you, cadets. And now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember May?
Yeah.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Fraser is on Zoom. She will be serving as an expectator on tonight. Councilmember Bryson? Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Fails? Thank you. You all should have a copy of the minutes from August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five in your packets. And I will entertain a motion to adopt. It's been moved and seconded that the minutes from August eighteenth be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting for, uh, adoption of the minutes from August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion pass. And now we, we will begin with committee reporting. Uh, we will begin with committee reporting, starting with Ways and Means, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means has met two times since our last council meeting. Um, the first meeting was on August twenty-sixth. Um, at that meeting, um, agenda items number five and six were both discussed in that committee. Uh, at that time, those, those items were tabled by the committee. Um, and then we had another, um, Ways and Means Committee meeting just before this council meeting, where those two agenda items were brought out of committee with a no recommendation, uh, to the full council. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next committee, ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. We have six, seven ordinance on the agenda tonight. Number one is up for the third and final reading. Number two is up for the second reading. Number three is up for the first reading. Number, agenda item number four and five. Excuse me, number four is up for the first reading. Agenda items number five and six have been pulled by the sponsor. Agenda item six A and ordinance adopted pursuant to Act eleven twelve of twenty seventeen, approving the application of Martin D. Scott for a private club to be located at two oh one Main Street, pound of Arkansas for related purposes and declaring an emergency. I move that this ordinance be added to the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that item, uh, an ordinance six A be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember May?
Councilmember May? Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Bryson? Councilmember Fails? Motion passes.
Agenda items seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are resolutions, and they will be completed on tonight. Mayor, I, I yield you the floor this time.
Thank you. Councilmember? Councilmember Fraser is on Zoom, and I ask that, uh, if she's available to deliver her report for the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. Um, I, I do not have, um, can you hear me? Can you all hear me?
Wait, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. This, I didn't realize this was the time that I had to address, uh, items five and six that I'm pulling. So I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Um, I know that there has been quite a bit of conversation about the, the, uh, proposed uh, ordinance to pass a one cent, ten-year sales and use tax, as well as the ordinance to put it on the ballot. Um, I will start off by saying this and reminding people who, uh, heard me and who I spoke with throughout my campaign, but also during the transition and since I have served as mayor, that I have always been clear that we need a tax because we need revenue. But we need it applied appropriately with transparency and accountability, with clarity about how we would spend the money, with assurance to people that throughout the process of procurement, throughout the process of projects that would address our city's dire needs, that there would be full audits every two years, which is in this language. But I, I also have heard loud and clear in the last couple of weeks especially, from my colleagues on the council as well as citizens, that while I have spoken with plenty of people who understand this need, I heard every citizen who said just what we heard Mr. Finley say tonight. He said, "I don't know what you're doing." And that's a problem. Before we do anything, I'm, I hear you that everyone needs to understand what we're proposing, be excited about it, be clear about it, because make no mistake, this is not a proposal for a windfall. This is a proposal because what people don't realize, and I talked about this months ago. In twenty twenty, we had a population of forty-one thousand. Last year, when I was on the campaign trail, that population had already dwindled down to a little over thirty-eight thousand. Right now, twenty twenty-five, we're, we're just over thirty-seven thousand. We cannot continue to lose population and therefore lose our tax base while we do not do anything to speak of, to invest in our children to the extent that they stay here and have opportunities for employment, to start businesses, to buy homes, to start families. We have to do that. We have to address our housing stock. We have to address blight. We have to address our infrastructure, whether that's Wi-Fi or whether that's potholes and overlay. All of that is extra and all of that costs money. Right now, we are at a balanced budget with just a little over two million dollars that we are taking in more than we spend. There is not enough belt tightening to fully address what we need to address if we want to see jobs, if we want to attract population. And if we want to assist small businesses, for example, there are so many things that are not wants, but that are needs. This is like a house where you gotta fix the roof and the foundation. We cannot afford to just hang curtains. And fixing a roof and the foundation costs money that we do not have. But it is my responsibility as mayor to work with all of these good men and women to make sure that when they go back to the people in their wards, that they can say with confidence, whether they agree or not, this is what this is, that they can confidently vote for something to put on the ballot, not to pass it, but to give the people the choice to know what we need and to make the choice as to whether or not we are gonna put skin in the game. As I always say, no one is coming to save us. We have to save ourselves, and we have the resources to do it with. I accept my responsibility to share with you what that looks like, how much it costs, why we doing it now. And so I'm pulling it down so that we can do that, so that we can have town hall meetings, so that we can share information. And we will begin this week by sharing a fact sheet online. We will share it throughout the city. We will schedule town hall meetings over the next three months. Yes. And and we're gonna do this while listening to you. I'm gonna, um, stop there and now resume. Thank you for your attention. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for their willingness to work together on this important initiative. Okay, um, now, Councilmember Fraser, will you please deliver your report on economic and community development?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, I do not have a report from Economic and Community Development. However, I would like to say for the last two months, because we do not have a movie theater in Pine Bluff, um, I took it upon myself to bring movies to Pine Bluff, and the last two have been successful. Uh, we had a hundred and five registered last month and eighty attended, uh, for August, and they want one every month. So in response to them wanting one every month, I'm doing that. Um, we got it already booked each month until the end of this year to have a movie each month in the city of Pine Bluff for our citizens. Um, Archwell is a sponsor of the one that's going to be in September. Um, we have a limited seat of fifty people. Already twenty-three has booked. Um, and the other ones that's happening in October, November, December will be in the Pine Bluff Library, and we'll have a seating of a hundred people. And already with those, I have twenty-five already booked. So, um, I just wanted to let the people know that we hear, um, all of your, uh, concerns and things that you would like to have happen in your city. And although we don't have, uh, stable movie theater in our town, we are doing our best to get that done. It is not just me, it's Liberty Utilities, uh, uh, Archwell and, uh, Judge Ernest Brown and a whole lot of other citizens of Pine Bluff and people outside of our state that is helping us to do this every month. So just keep an eye out for the list, and I thank you all for hearing me out. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And, uh, Councilmember Denton is not here this evening to deliver her report on public health and welfare. So we'll ask, uh, Councilmember Lockett to please deliver your report on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the, um, Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, at one o'clock in the city, old city council chambers. We had reports from Ms. Kennedy, the executive director of the Clean and Beautiful Commission. She stated, if I'm correct, Councilmember Fails, that's September twentieth? Twenty? Twenty-fifth. They are planning a massive, uh, cleanup that they've been working on for about two or three months. So that was a big project that she, uh, presented. Uh, Mr. Gilly, I'd reported that the Public Works, uh, projects were on schedule. Um, I think looking good over at Martin Luther King Park, where we have the new fields. I'm really impressed with, with how that, um, uh, works. I didn't have a report from Ms., uh, Holloman at Parks and Rec or, uh, aquatics in a director, but I look forward to having one on next meeting. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fails, will you please deliver your report on development and planning?
So development and planning, we did meet earlier today, and we decided to, we voted to send item six A to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Our next meeting will be on September the fifth at four, four o'clock PM. That will be our full, um, meeting. We'll be reviewing a couple of property acquisition requests along with other business that some of our departments have, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Fails. Councilmember Bryson, will you please deliver your report on traffic and aviation?
Thank you, Mayor. Traffic and aviation has not met since our last council meeting, but I will set up a time for us to meet within the next week, and I'll get with the clerk on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryson. Uh, Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report on the Administration Committee?
The Administration Committee has not met since the last council meeting. However, our regular scheduled meeting is the second Tuesday of each month. That is, that will be September the ninth, and I will get with the city clerk's office on the appropriate time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Councilmember, um, Brown, will you please deliver your report on public safety?
Thank you, Mayor. Public safety has not met since our last council meeting, um, but we will meet tomorrow. I know it's short notice because we were out yesterday, but we will meet tomorrow at one thirty PM in the old council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And now we will, uh, hear our proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agenda item number one, an ordinance revising travel policies for city officials, officers, and employees and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance revising travel policies for city officials, officers, and employees and for related purposes.
Move for adoption?
It's been, it's been moved and seconded that ordinance number one be, um, be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those who wish to vote for the adoption of ordinance number one indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, twenty-nine hundred block of Ohio Street West Side, up for the second reading.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, twenty-nine hundred block of Ohio Street West Side.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number three, an ordinance prescribing protocols for the processing of payment of confi- confidential funds by the city clerk's office and for related purposes up for the first
Whereas the Pine Bluff Police Department controls confidential funds for investigative expenses, and whereas the department has in place written policy and procedure number three sixty concerning the administration of confidential funds, and whereas in the interest of transparency, a set of protocols should be adopted which concerns the process used by the city clerk's office in dispersing confidential funds to the police department when requested by the police department. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, no confidential funds as defined in the Police Department Policy and Procedures number, uh, the, uh, three sixty shall be dispersed by the city clerk's office to any person unless disbursement is pursuant to a written request submitted to the clerk's office, which has been signed by the chief of police. Section two, the written request shall identify by name the police department officer who is authorized to receive the check for the confidential funds. Section three, the city clerk will require that a receipt for the check to be signed by the officer receiving the check. Section four, the check will be made payable to the Pine Bluff Police Department or one of the department's divisions designated in the written request. Section five, the city clerk's office will lia- be liaison with a designated financial institution to facilitate the ability of the department's representative to deposit or cash the disbursement check at an authorized bank location. Section six, nothing in this ordinance shall be deemed to supersede the provisions of the Police Department's police policies and procedures number three sixty. Section seven, all ordinances are parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section eight, the sections of this ordinance are declared to be severable. If any section is found unlawful, it shall be treated as excised and the remaining sections continue to be enforced. Section nine, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will cause it to be published as prescribed by law. Section ten, this ordinance takes effect on the thirty-first day after its passage.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number four, an ordinance amended in section two dash one forty-one of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas the relentless advance of technology has resulted in many vendors or other entities requiring payment in electronic form, and whereas in order to continue to do business with these vendors or entities, it is necessary for municipal government to be authorized to pay them in a form they will accept. And whereas ACA fourteen fifty-nine one oh five E authorizes the municipality to make electronic payments when authorized by ordinance passed by the governing body and pursuant to the policies and procedures compliant with state law and regulations. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that section two dash one forty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended as follows. Designate the current section as subsection A and add a new subsection B to provide. The city of Pine Bluff is authorized to make payment for goods and services to a vendor or other entity in electronic form, consistent with the City of Pine Bluff Accounting Policy and Procedures Manual and the Arkansas law and regulations. Section two, number two, the city treasurer, city clerk, and finance director are responsible for establishing protocols concerning electronic payments for inclusion in the manual and ensure that the manual remains compliant with state and local rules regarding record, record keeping and record retention are kept. Number three, the protocols and any amendments there too shall be presented to the city council for approval before inclusion in the manual. Section two, all ordinance are parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section three, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will ensure its publication and compliance with Arkansas law. Section four, this ordinance takes effect on the thirty-first day after its approval.
Place it on the calendar. Place it on the calendar. Agenda item 6A, an ordinance adopted pursuant to Act 1112 of 2017 approving the application of Martin D. Scott for a private club to be located at 201 Main Street, Pine Bluff, Arkansas for related purposes and declaring an emergency. Up for the first reading.
Whereas Act number 1112 of 2017 requires applicants for a private club license to obtain approval of the governing body of the city or county where the private club is to be located. And whereas Martin D. Scott has made proper application with the Pine Bluff Planning Commission for a private club at 201 Main Street in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Jefferson County. And whereas the Pine Bluff Planning Commission has granted the UPOR application of Martin D. Scott and finds that it meets the legal requirements. And whereas the premises has been the site for similar uses. And whereas the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff finds that the application of Martin D. Scott will promote the public convenience and advantage through providing community hospitality and increasing sales tax revenue. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the application of Martin D. Scott for issuance of a private club license for the location with the address of 201 Main Street, Pine Bluff, Arkansas be and is hereby approved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff. Section two, that pursuant to Act 1112 of 2017, Martin D. Scott is hereby authorized to file a private club application with the Department of Finance and Administration, Alcohol Beverage Control Division for the location at 201 Main Street, Pine Bluff, Jefferson County, Arkansas. A copy of this ordinance shall be provided to the Alcohol Beverage and Control Division along with the ABC Private Club application of Martin D. Scott. Section three, emergency declared. As this ordinance concerns a matter affecting the lives and property of the people, specifically the right of community hospitality among with, among the people of Pine Bluff, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from the, from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading?
It's been moved and seconded to place, uh, ordinance 6A on its second reading. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
An ordinance adopted pursuant to Act, now Act 1112 of 2017 approving the application of Martin D. Scott for a private club to be located at 201 Main Street, Pine Bluff, Arkansas for related purposes and declaring an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 6A be placed, uh, on the agenda for its third and final reading. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk will read the roll for a vote.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
An ordinance adopted pursuant to Act 1112 of 2017 approving the application of Martin D. Scott for a private club to be located at 201 Main Street, Pine Bluff, Arkansas for related purposes and declaring an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 6A be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Is Mr. Scott here? Okay. Just, just saying, if you would, just keep it safe. We got you, man. Let's, let's turn the city around. We can do it. Your leader's up here. Help us. Just keep it safe.
No further discussion? All of those in, in agreement for the adoption of ordinance 6A indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's been moved and seconded that we accept an emergency clause. Any discussion? With no discussion? With no discussion? All of those in, uh, voting for the adoption of emergency clause to ordinance 6A indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
You have to do a roll call, Mayor, roll call for, uh, the emergency clause.
Okay, okay. So, um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the emergency clause.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Motion passes.
Agenda item number seven, a resolution off. Waste Management and Related Services.
Whereas the city's current contract for waste collection and disposal with Waste Management of Arkansas is scheduled to terminate on October 31st, 2025. And whereas in anticipation of the expiration of the contract, the City Council in Resolution number 4909 authorized the retention of the firm of Solid Waste Specialist LLC to assist the city in the procurement process for selection of a firm to provide waste management and related per- services. And whereas the city solicited proposals from vendors interested in providing services necessary to the efficient and economical collection of and disposal of waste generated within the city. And whereas proposals were received from interested vendors with the proposals being reviewed by a review committee with the assistance of the consultant and with representatives of those vendors who submitted proposals invited to make oral presentations with regard to their proposals. And whereas after due consideration of each vendor's proposal and oral presentation is the recommendation of the city's review committee that Cards Incorporated submitted the proposal most advantageous to the city and that a contract with this vendor consistent with the city's specification and the firm's submission should be negotiated with Cards Incorporated to provide the waste management services required by the city commencing at 12:01 AM on November 1st, 2025. Now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor is authorized to execute a contract for Waste Management and Related Services with Cards Incorporated consistent with the city's specification and the firm's submission and specifically the services and fees included in option A, exclusive residential and commercial collection, uh, found on page 61 of Cards Incorporated Proposal. Section two, the mayor may continue negotiation with Cards Incorporated for related services that are deemed, that are determined to be in the best interest of the city and its residents subject to council approval of any additional agreement.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution number seven be adopted. Any discussion? Councilmember Lockett?
What's the duration? Well, actually, I believe it's five years. Five years. And any, any further question? Five years.
Um, before we call Mr. Wheatley to deliver his presentation, I would, um, ask if there are any further questions. Councilmember Mays?
Yeah. Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'm voting no on this. I still say Waste Management is doing a great job. I don't know how we got into this and we just talking about some trash now. I know it's big business, but we just talking about trash, man. And, uh, I don't know where this company come from, but let me tell you something. They don't know how tough it is. Pine Bluff is a tough market. Waste Management does a great job of keeping our trash organized. It took them a while to get there. I watched it and, and it, to me, they do a great job. But we just talking about some trash now and you gonna see it all over the ground once Waste Management is pulled out of here. And I'm just letting y'all know.
Um, provide for the PowerPoint bit, we're not able to do that, correct? Oh, we do, we do have it. Okay.
I hope we do.
Yes, okay. So I'm gonna stop talking and allow you to please make your presentation. And this is Mr. George Wheatley with SWS who we contracted to assist us as sort of our procurement consultant in this, um, process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of the City Council. Do you hear me? Okay, good. We really appreciate, first of all, your business. Uh, we've enjoyed working with the City of Pine Bluff. It's, um, it started back in May and, um, we were hired to put out a request for proposals to, um, to do a new contract for solid waste services in the City of Pine Bluff. Councilman Lockett, uh, to answer your question, we proposed in the specifications and we were led by the city staff on writing these specifications that it be a five-year contract with a, upon mutual consent, a five-year renewal. So it, um, it possibly could end up being a 10-year contract, but it's, the initial contract is for five years. Next slide, if you don't mind, Michael. And pardon me as I turn my back on some of you, but I, I want to, uh, I want to express as others have already tonight, what a, what an amazing job technologically has been done by switching over to this room for this. Uh, and Michael and I'll get this going here quickly. Yes. I'm not sure, but I'm gonna talk through it and there, there's, there's short. And I'll, uh, I understand, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, what do I need to do?
I'm clicking on here, but it's not moving.
Like this app? I don't know what's going on here. Let's see, slideshow from the beginning. Why is that not letting me do that? Hit that red button you hit earlier.
Let's bring it up to the screen.
Using up my 10 minutes. I'm using up my 10 minutes.
No, these, these don't count.
Okay, okay. You want me just to go through it without people seeing it? There we are, right there. Okay, we, we, we've made it to slide two. The, the current services that you have, uh, and you've had it with Waste Management has been set earlier for over 30 years, uh, expires November the 1st of this year. The current rate, uh, to the contractor is 18. I have 28. I think, uh, Mr. Vernon said 1838, but, um, that's per home, per month. Next slide, Michael. Let's try that. By the way, that, this current service is having a cart at each home that, um, is picked up once a week. There is no recycling at residential places. The brush and bulk collection, uh, which is a big part of this, these specifications right now is collected weekly, but you have to call in, uh, to, to get a pickup. And then there's also commercial collection. And we were engaged, there you go, Michael, if you can just full screen that, next slide. There we go. We were engaged in May of this year, uh, to provide an RFP and contract documents and assist the procurement of a new contract for the upcoming term. Uh, the kickoff meeting was held in June where, where the selected solid waste RFP committee gave specific instructions, as I said a few minutes ago, to our. Here that there was a tremendous emphasis on customer service, the way calls are answered. And then there was a, a tremendous emphasis on people not having to call in in order to get, uh, brush and bulk pickup. Uh, next slide, Michael. Uh, there were four options that companies were given the, given the option to bid on. This is the one that's been recommended in this resolution is residential cla- trash collection once per week with one 96-gallon cart. Bulk and brush collected once a week with no call-in required. And what that means is there will be a truck that comes by and picks up trash. There will be a truck on that same route that comes by and picks up, uh, your brush and bulk collection every week. Option B was, was the same except for the fact that, uh, uh, the roll-off market would be, would be closed. On option A, the roll-off market remains open and the difference in open and closed means that, uh, if it were open, anybody could be in the roll-off business inside the City of Pine Bluff. If it's closed, it would be to this one contractor as a total franchise for them. Option C, we put in, uh, that they could do, uh, either A or B, C and D or A and B with, uh, with residential recycling as an option. Next slide, Michael. Brush and bulk collection for all options, brush and books, there'll be a maximum of four cubic yards collected weekly. At the last council meeting when I spoke, uh, I told you that was the equivalent of laying down two refrigerators side by side. That makes up about four cubic yards. So that's how much that can be put out by any home every week. And here's the, here's the main emphasis that we got from the city. No call-in is required prior to brush and bulk being collected. Next slide. Annual rate adjustments will be determined using the Bureau of Labor Statistics Garbage and Trash Index. This is a federal government standard from the Consumer Price Index and, uh, future rate adjustments will be capped at 4%. All carts, dumpsters, and roll-off containers will be new. The mayor and her staff im- impressed upon our team that they wanted to. that they wanted to beautify Pine Bluff. And part of this beautification is brand-new equipment. Brand-new trucks, brand-new carts, brand-new containers, brand-new roll-off dumpsters, if roll-off is part of the contract. Next slide. A pre-proposal meeting was held on July the twenty-second. I think almost ten companies were invited. Six firms attended this meeting and were then given a week to send in follow-up questions for city staff to respond. Four firms responded on August the eleventh with a proposal. They were Waste Management, who is your incumbent, Cards, GFL. GFL stands for Green for Life. They operate out of, well, in South Arkansas and also outside of Little Rock, North Little Rock. And then Republic Waste, who operates out of Little Rock. The scoring criteria, this is hard to read, but it's, it's been in an email to all of you. I was copied by Chief Campbell on that email, telling the various items. When proposers submitted a book, that's what the judging committee read and judged was the book. They didn't judge the pricing, they judged the book. And some of the highlighted items are, have you done this kind of work in like-sized cities? What's the financial strength of your company? Can you go out and buy enough new trucks to do this work? Can you buy enough carts and garbage containers to do this work? What's the strength of? Yes? Yes, that'd be great.
Since they have been in conception. But seeing that and then looking at the Better Business Bureau website, even though they're not a Better Business Bureau company, there have been over six hundred certain complaints in reference to their services, which some of them may be solved within this last year. So I'm just a little concerned. I just really had a comment more than a question. But I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I did do a little bit of the research. I don't have no yet, no anything, but I would like to have some clarity on some of these situations that I'm finding out about in my research of the company.
You absolutely will, and I
That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, please continue.
Okay. And the council, council lady understands, Mayor, that you will address that. Okay, thank you. We ask for safety scores. We don't ask for safety scores of, of a major corporation nationwide. We ask for safety scores in a, in their local jurisdiction that would, would be servicing Pine Bluff if they're, if they are successful in, in getting this business. Then we wanted, we judge, and everything gets a percentage that adds up to sixty-five percent. We judge if this book is their clarity, is their organization. And, and everything gets a percentage, but all of these percentages add up to sixty-five percent of their score. The other thirty-five percent of their score is the pricing that they submit. So the, the absolute perfect score is one hundred. No one ever gets a sixty-five. No one ever gets a one hundred. The lowest price gets a thirty-five, which is the most points you can get for pricing. The next lowest price gets a percentage of thirty-five. And it's, it's all very weighted and levelized and fair. Next slide, please, Michael. Mayor appointed a team of nine to perform the work of judging these submittals and any alternates. We've heard about alternates tonight. Our company held a scoring workshop to review how scoring, the scoring process with these nine judges, utilizing a spreadsheet that reflected the written portion of the submittal. We scored the numerical pricing entries using extension data. And let me explain that. It's easy to say, okay, you've got, let's say thirteen thousand eight hundred homes. It's easy to multiply that times the price per home per month and tell you what that number is. The difficult part is, okay, how many, how many various containers do you have in the commercial market? Two cubic yard, four cubic yard, six cubic yard, eight cubic yard? And then how many days a week are they serviced? And everybody submitted a matrix for their pricing in each one of those categories. And let's just give an example. If company A, B, C had one hundred and forty-one four yards going once a week, then that's, that we extended that price out per month. If they also had forty-eight yard containers going three days a week, we extended that price out to get a total monthly cost. We did the same with the roll-off pricing. Let's see, after we did that, then we combined the total of possible sixty-five points with that total thirty-five points. Next slide, Michael. The written evaluation, I just explained, that's the book they turn in, can get up to sixty-five points for a perfect score. The price evaluation, thirty-five points. There's the total score. Then there's one more process. We take these total scores and then the city decides who they want to bring in for final interviews. And out of the four companies, three companies were brought in for final interviews. They were Waste Management, GFL, and Cards Incorporated. Next slide. Here, here are the rates for home collection, dumpster collection, roll-off services combined. And you see, we had a couple of companies, Republic and Waste Management, that submitted no bids. That was, Waste Management did not want to submit a bid if it was an open market. Republic consequently didn't want to submit a bid if it was a closed market for roll-off. And the same thing with, with the last two are adding recycling. Yes?
Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, I'm just a hands-on guy.
Right.
Been everywhere all my life. You know since you've been with these companies.
Know each other well.
My, my thing is, if somebody has a problem with some trash on Friday in their neighborhood, are you guys gonna make it happen? You know, it just, the company?
Hold on, because he doesn't represent the company. He's explaining the process, so let's let him finish. And there is someone here from the company, if you would like him to come up and ask that question. So let's, let's go ahead and please finish, Mr. Wheatley.
The, the only thing I'll say to that, be right with you, Councilman, pardon me. The only thing I'll say to that in response is that that is a part of their written evaluation on how they, how they respond to customer service issues. Okay. Next slide, Michael. Waste Management and, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lockett. Yes, go ahead. Yes, go back one slide. Thank you, sir.
Do the numbers represent, when you see there for the people with the open roll-off market, there's a million three hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents? Is that what they would contribute to the city? I mean, what, what is those numbers?
No, if, if you take, if you take their house rate times the number of homes and their commercial rate by the number of containers and the number of weeks, or days of the week that those containers are serviced, it comes up with these numbers. And that's, that's a, that's a monthly number. And then same with the roll-off.
So, so explain to me, the Cards' roll-off market at one million three hundred and twenty-one thousand and the nineteen thirty point?
They, they bid, they, they submitted a price per home of nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents per home, per month. Yes?
And that, how, what does that have to do with the roll-off market?
Well, the, the way the cities, we, in the solid waste industry, we refer to the City of Pine Bluff as a total franchise. And that means you've got residential service, commercial service, and roll-off service. It's been semi-open market because of, of a longstanding ordinance that's on the books here in Pine Bluff of self-hall. So there are other roll-off companies that are doing business within the City of Pine Bluff.
So that rate, that rate would be applicable if we have an open market, is what you're telling me, the nineteen?
Yes. The nineteen thirty-nine is regardless of which option you take. Except if you wanted to add recycle, it would be an extra charge. But nineteen thirty-nine is whether it's closed market or open market on roll-off.
Okay. Okay, so what does that mean for the companies that did bid on the open market roll-off? If the nineteen was irrespective whether it was closed or open?
We, no companies were disqualified. All companies were, were scored by, by the judges and, and we just said no bid. And so now they were, when they submitted no bid, all we could do was extrapolate the numbers for that company. But it, it, it's hard for me to say. It, it didn't make any difference, but it, it made very little difference in the, in the pricing scoring.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a grip on the graph. Now, what, how does this figure in with the alternative bid from Waste Management? What is, was this submitted within this timetable of these?
Well, let, let me explain that. Let me explain that. Okay, let's go to that next slide, Michael. Waste Management did provide an alternate to allow them not to replace containers and trucks regardless of age and reduce their fee for residential service. And you heard Mr. Vernon say that his, his rate was a little less than, than the best, best rate.
Okay.
All right, then the rates, the rates for dumpsters and roll-off collection remain the same. Additionally, for both the base bid and the alternate bid, the resident must still call in for brush and bulk service. That was one of the things the city wanted us to write in the specs, that citizens did not have to call in. But in this case, they would have to in their alternative bid. The specification for the base bid called for weekly brush collection without having contact. Okay. We we tried to, to be as as fair as possible, but you, you can't bid, you can't bid at a better rate and not meet the specifications. And that's what we ran into with that particular alternate bid. They had, we had four companies submit pricing. Three companies had no exceptions. Waste Management not only had an alternate bid, but they had five pages, five tight written pages of exceptions. And that's, that's one of the things that the judges judge the book on is exceptions or no exceptions. For example, one of the exceptions was, and, and you can thank your city attorney, Scott, she said, we had suggested a five percent cap on CPI. She said, no, we're gonna, we need to lower that. And we lowered it after discussions with city staff to four percent. Waste Management made an exception, and I'm not picking on them, I'm just stating the facts. I worked for them for thirty years. So, but the, the fact is, they wanted no cap on this, on price increase. And on the, using the CPI, but if the CPI were eight percent, they would get eight percent. Under this, under our specifications, that the mayor and her staff approved, if the CPI is eight percent, they can only get four percent. And if you, if you pick this company tonight, going forward, they can only get four percent. Now, if it's, if it's two and a half percent, they can't get four percent. They can only get two and a half percent. So you're, you're covered. It, it can't go over four. So that was one of the things that we thought was somewhat unfair to bid, bid a number, but, but change the, sort of change the rules. And, and that's, that's why you have exceptions in the book. And those are the exceptions they took. Michael, is there another one? All right. Okay, here, here are the written scores by the, by the city's judges. You can see Cards on the written scores, the book, and Waste Management were both at forty-four. GFL came at, came in at thirty-nine. Republic came in at thirty-six. On the pricing scores, Cards came in at thirty-two, GFL thirty-five, Republic twenty-eight, Waste Management twenty-nine. For the combined score, Cards was seventy-six, GFL seventy-four, Republic sixty-four, and Waste Management seventy-three. And I think you can see from the, from the combined scores why the city wanted to bring in three companies for the final interview. Very close score, seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy-three. Next slide. Based on the combined pricing scores, that's what I just said, top threes were interviewed. And that happened on August the twenty-second in the conference room off, off the mayor's office. A series of questions for each company and some questions for all of the companies were prepared in advance and were proposed by members of the judging committee. The committee recommends, after all of this, you've, you've taken, you've taken ten invitations. Six people came to the pre-proposal conference. You've now funneled it down to three. You take the written evaluation, that's part of the score, the price evaluation. And then we did an interview evaluation. And you've heard from your own resolution that, that the city is, not, not SWS, we don't make recommendations. The city makes the recommendation to use, to use Cards. We've really enjoyed working with you, and we hope that if you know of another community that is facing something like this, that you'll recommend us in a kind way. I'll answer any questions you might have.
But the problem I'm having though, you mean? What I'm saying is, I, I appreciate the time that you spent with the committee, but we having to vote on it, having to but we having to vote on it have the least amount of information. So, I mean, I just don't feel comfortable just rubber stamping what's being presented. And really don't have time to study this. I, I don't really think this is a fair process then. I, I think the committee, that if the committee were the sole vote and they have the information. But I, I just really think that we need a little bit more time to digest what, what just took place in terms of what was presented. I would like to have that to study over a glass of Kool-Aid and a hot dog and really just see what we dealing with. I, I know that you in fair honest can say that it was a fair process because you were in the middle of it and you were pretty much the facilitator. But being the end, the end user of this information, I find it to be a little lacking.
I'll, I'll respond to that this way. The mayor, mayor and chief of staff ask your incumbent for a three-month extension from, from November first, November, December, January until February first. And also ask if you, well, they asked first for a six-month extension. But they said, if you can't do six months, can you do three months? What, what we're all facing here is time. This, this is a big contract. It's a huge capital expense for the successful vendor. A lot of trucks to be ordered, a lot of other equipment to be ordered, and with not a lot of time left. I used to work for Waste Management, but I don't anymore. They, they would not, they would not give a three or a six-month extension. That's, that's a factual way I can answer that. Yes, sir, Councilwoman.
Now, in the state of Missouri, I'm seeing with the attorney, the attorney general and the Better Business Bureau investigating Cards, trash pickup, or inconsistency with their trash pickup and other related problems. And you are?
Oh, I definitely want to speak to that, and I'll be very frank. I think I, like many others who were on the committee and pored over every detail that we could for these proposals. Because this was, may look like this, sometimes thicker. And for Cards, because it is not a publicly traded company, I was curious to get more information about their financials. And so I went online, just like Councilwoman Frazier did, and that's when I saw that same thing. I saw the issues from twenty twenty-four. And I remember, that was one of, an all-nighter I pulled, and I remember emailing, emailing Chief Campbell and sent links about that to her and to our, to our consultant and other members on the committee. And I said, it looks like Cards is not in the cards. So I was exactly where you were and was pretty tight on, on the interview day. And was ready to, I had printouts of all of it. And before I had a chance, they addressed it immediately. they explained very fully what happened in Missouri. Explained very fully what happened with Better Business Bureau. And what I can tell you is from questions and the questions of others who were there, present, interviewed them, those issues have not only been solved, but their business model has been structured so that when they are in transition through the acquisition of a company, that, that doesn't happen again, including having a team on the ground to help with that transition, what they call their orange team. And let me tell you this, they shared how their complaints over time since twenty twenty-four. Oh, I think I need to use your mic now. Since twenty twenty-four, and you all can't see this, but I can show you all this, how their, the complaints have gone down significantly and they're working with the Better Business Bureau to complete their accreditation process. I could, I think that maybe you could hear from someone here today, but I, I just want to share that this has been a process where, that no one took lightly, that everyone on that committee, who are all Pine Bluff stakeholders. And I believe that we shared that list of stakeholders, including Ken Johnson, including representation from Liberty, including our city attorney. No one took this lightly. And, but I will share with you that, at the end of the day, what we did wa, after the interview, was a ranking. So we also didn't do a, you know, one and done. We asked everyone to rank those who we asked to come back and interview based on what we were privy to in the scoring and based on the interview, including one of your colleagues on the city council. Councilmember Brown. I said one, but let me, let me finish. For me and others that I spoke with after our process, and I want to remind you all that, and this is not a criticism of Waste Management in, in a vacuum, because all of them had their issues. I went online and did a search of reviews for every last one of these companies. I just know that there were issues and concerns that we had where, when I was in my transition process, I just remember what the comments from everybody on this, on this dais was. And let, let, hold on, please, don't interrupt me, I don't interrupt you. Okay, thank you. And I feel it's important to share this because I think they'll, you know, as someone who is charged with dealing with the day-to-day and bringing together people around processes like this, we have the process so that the council doesn't have to go through the same process. And we have a resolution process so information can be presented to you just like it is with every resolution that you get in your packet so that questions can be asked at the meeting and prior to. But let me just share with you a few things that changed my mind in addition to the way that those cons, excuse me, those concerns were addressed. Number one, placing, investing in a hauling, transfer and customer service facility here in the city weighed ve, very heavily in the favor of Cards. The specifications regarding their advanced fleet technology, third eye camera system, willing to replace all of the containers, all put all, use all new containers, commercial and new trucks, all of those things were critical. So when you think about the possibility of the accessibility of trucks, the age of those trucks, all of those impact the service to our constituents. And so when you start fresh with new containers and new trucks, that means something in terms of the quality. And when you add to it a local, not a call center outside of the state, but a local call center right here with local folks, that meant something to the people on the committee. And I think that I can honestly say, I did not think we would be here with a different company. But I think that that weighed, weighing against the fact that we were very clear about what we wanted in the specifications of the contract based upon what was put in the RFP. So that if somebody's trash didn't get picked up with what we had in that, in that RFP, would mean that there would be fines assessed. So it wouldn't just be us calling saying, hey, guys, can you make sure and, and pick this up that? Because that's an incentive to make sure that it doesn't happen, because people want their money. We felt that that was very important. And there were several things like that, that we wanted to ensure, to protect the city, no matter who the, the, the provider is. That is for our people. All of those things were important. And Cards and one of the other proposers did not make any exceptions to those things that we felt were important. So I just felt it was important to say that. And I, I want to say on the part of all of those who spent their work time and spent time away from work to serve in this capacity, to pour over information that you wouldn't necessarily get to pour over in such a detailed way and ask the questions, to come out with a decision that ultimately was near unanimous. There was only one person that didn't have Cards as their number one, and even that person had Cards as their number two. So this isn't, again, something that anybody took lightly. And I just would ask that we all not rubber stamp anything, but just understand that this was a process that upfront we were paying for to ensure that we get the best outcome for our citizens and that the people who served on that committee were very capable people who spent a lot of time. So with that, I'll just stop talking. I do know that there was a correction on the part of Waste Management that they wanted to make with regard to one of the slides. And as you come up, if there were any more questions or concerns.
Oh, there we go. I think, I think it's working. I just have one or two corrections. On, on the slide about the alternate proposal, it stated that we were unwilling or we would not replace containers and carts. We, we're heavily invested in the containers and carts in the city already. And we replace containers and carts as, as they have issues. And, and that's what we stated in our bid that we would do. We replace any container or any cart that needed to be replaced as needed. It was wasteful for us to replace containers and carts that, that did not need to be replaced. The other thing is the exceptions. I think, mister, we alluded to that the exceptions weren't allowed to an extent. And while they, they were scored, we, we did have exceptions based on our knowledge of the current contract. And those were allowed, they were just scored. And we scored less because of that. And, and we understood that, but those were important to us based on our experience and knowledge of the contract. And that, that's, that's all I just wanted to speak on. Thank you.
So much. Now, Councilmember Mays, you said you had a question about Cards and whether or not they would, about their responsiveness in customer service. Did you still want to pose that question? Here, you have a comment?
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you all for your listening. Thank you. But you see what I'm saying that? I'm sitting next to the mayor. And I would say something. I didn't just walk up here. You know, I'm sitting up here, everybody don't sit right here. Can I get a witness? I think we need to look at this a, again, because I wasn't privileged of all this information and I sat right here. I should have been the first one, got a copy of this, I'm just not saying this. Come on now, I wasn't born yesterday. You know, really, we gotta start playing with our citizens. They don't know what's going on to citizens. Let me tell you, they don't know what's happening. I'm, you know, I'm straight with y'all, call me anytime. Eight seven oh seven one eight five eight six nine. I'm gonna shoot you straight. And they should shoot, get, shoot y'all straight as well. You can't fool these people, all that trash, we talking about trash. Let me, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish now. Because I'm not a fool trying to fool these citizens.
No one on this dais is fooling the citizens. Everyone up here is serving the citizens. We are not doing that. There is a process in place. There is a process in place. And there is no, no RFP process where proposals are sent. And then we put the information before the council and the information that's put before the council is the information that the selection committee got. There might as well not be a selection committee, there might as well not be a process. And we might as well make the selection committee the council. And if you all have time to do that, then I'm fine with it. We pulled one member to make sure that they, perspective of the council would be represented. But I just take issue with the fact that for somehow, for this contract, there's not enough information, not enough time, or we're trying, anybody's trying to fool anybody. It just wasn't like that. And I just want to make that clear to the people and to the members of the council. Chief Campbell did yo woman's work in managing this process with a very short window of time. Now, we have before us a resolution to move forward after hiring consultants to shepherd this process, after securing a selection committee of stakeholders at the highest qualifications and interest and rapport in this process. I have good business, personal relationships with people involved, but this is not about my friendship with anyone involved in this process. This is business. And it's business to make sure that we do the best we can for our citizens and not rubber stamp anything. So with that, I would just ask if there are any more comments or questions.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I have great respect for you and all those involved in this process, but what I just can't let go of is a, a thirty, forty-year relationship that, you know, for me, works. And I'm not saying that this information that was presented has any, any particular flaws in it, but I definitely would like to have just a little bit more information, especially, you know, given a little more contrast in what Cards offered and what, especially the alternative, alternative proposal from Waste Management, to see what value it is, you know, to the citizen to see what, what the difference is. And, you know, that, that, the only, only problem with this is, is that unlike any other contract in the city, this Waste Management contract impacts the citizen in a way that if we were trying to see who got the best, you know, software system or who got the best who got the best, you know, software system or who got the best, uh, um, telecommunication system, but we talking about something basic to, to citizens that on a daily basis, their quality of life is impacted on the quality of their solid waste pickup. And I, I, I just, uh, would like a little more time to just really get an understanding. Uh, because I would have liked some of that stuff that was presented to us to have hit our email in such a way that we would have a chance to see what the committee really considered. Uh, but it, it's just, it, it, I, I don't know how to say it. It's just not enough time to digest what took maybe a month or two for people to meet and come up with the, uh, uh, with the results that they came up with. And so that, that, that's, that's my, that's my thing now. I, you know, uh, like to entertain a motion to table this until we can get a little more information, which shouldn't be long so that we can get some real hard black and white. I mean, uh, we, we have in our proposal just one, one perspective of what was, um, what was reviewed. Yes, the only information in this packet related to the selection of the end vendor is the end vendor. It does, it doesn't have anybody else. It doesn't have anything to compare it to. It doesn't say here were the three finalists. Where is it? Uh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That, that, that don't work. You can't get us in a room dealing with a million dollar, uh, contract like this that's going to impact the people for five years and just have one set of informations that we can't take home with us, we can't review. We just see on the board that these were the three. Uh, I'm just saying that you got to understand, this is something that's important to people. I mean, this, this is, this is more than, yeah, you, you, you don't understand that I can't just tell people I voted for who the facilitator and the committee presented. And I didn't have anything that I could look at on, on any kind of basis to say, this is how they came up with this new vendor because if this don't work, people is gonna say, like it, didn't you look at what? What, what ended up being the final selection? Did you hear from the person that was gonna put it together? Did you have anything that, uh, you could go home with to say that, um, this made sense? I mean, that's just my thing. If, if, if it wasn't solid waste and it wasn't something that people dealt with on a, on a daily basis, I wouldn't be saying it like this. Saying what I'm saying is I'm not disregarding the time that the individuals put it together, but ain't but one problem. The, the in-vote comes here and we got to be able to tell our citizens that we had enough information to make a decision that impacted them on a daily basis for the next five years and something that second only to the police and the fire is the greatest service that we give to our citizens is that their solid waste will be picked up.
Let me say this. I um, I hear and respect what you're saying. But what I'm, what I'm frustrated about is that the, the, the window of time is very short in order for us to meet the deadline in transition so that we can provide the services for our people. And I think what we're experiencing right now is an expectation and a request for us to change the pro, excuse me, to change the process and how I've seen on a state and local level, any other contract the way that it's handled. I've never seen or heard of this where whatever the amount of money that's involved, it's not just about the money, it's about the service. It's about the process. It's about a clean and fair process. And like I said, like I don't have any skin in the game. Like I said, I initially thought the Cards wasn't in the Cards. And I think that all of us did our due diligence throughout a process that we paid someone upfront to engage for us when we knew we wouldn't have more time to do our due diligence for the people of this city. I don't, I don't owe anything to Cards. I don't owe anything to Republic. I don't owe anything to George Wheatley. Don't owe anything to Waste Management. We owe everything to the people. And we know there were issues last year, which is why I said, you know what, let's do a process. I had no, really thought that it wouldn't go the way that many of us thought it would go. But sometimes pressure, sometimes competition creates a little bit of hunger, a little bit of incentive. And there is I, I just think doing this defies the process that we've put in place. And you, above all people, have been very, um, faithful and loyal to the process. We put a process in place and now we want to table it because of the amount of money that's involved and how long we've been with somebody. And I just think that our people deserve better than that. But, um, it's been motioned and seconded. Yes.
Now, I'm not talking about table it till next month, Madam Mayor. We can table it till the end of the week. I don't think that a few days would, would hurt in terms of getting more information. Yes, so we can, I just amend my motion that, um, a motion to table this until, uh, no later than Friday to have just a discussion on the, the, uh, contrast of the vendors and just have a, a little time. So we, I'm just, you gotta understand y'all, we up here and, and whatever we decide, we gotta tell the people that we had enough information, we took enough time and we had it, the, the sufficient deliberation. That's all I'm requiring. I just don't feel that something of this magnitude to be dealt with, you know, in just one night, you know, you know, the reason they, they so, so, so that's my amendment to the, uh, motion. Did you want?
Uh, and I'm okay with us reconvening, even if it's a special call meeting later this week. I do fully understand that it's a very, very tight transition. And, um, even a one or two weeks delay can be, you know, a big setback. So I'm okay with at least that weeks period. I would ask, would it be possible for us to have a con, draft contract just to attach to the ordinance? I know every time we've approved the Waste Management, um, resolution, we've always attached the contract and it just specifies the term lengths and all the other, um, specifications. So I would be more comfortable if we at least had that attachment, but just wanted to make that comment.
Totally, totally respect what you're saying and thank you for putting that timeframe on it. Thank you, Councilmember. And, um, Attorney Scott, is that timeframe enough to get a draft? Okay. Okay. And, and, and let me say this. Um, my, what the frustration you hear is not in any of us doing our due diligence. I totally understand your desire to see more information because it is important for our people every day. I just don't like or appreciate um, any implication that the people who served, and I'm not saying that that's what you did, um, were somehow not taking this seriously, somehow didn't look at the things, um, that are being discussed today. Um, that are trying to fool anyone. I think that we can conduct these meetings and handle the people's business without in any way, um, attacking, criticizing, insulting anybody or, uh, where they come from or, or what they're trying to do. And, and not only do I think we can do that, I know that that's what we will do. And I will not entertain anything less from here on out, from anybody. With that, Councilmember Frazier.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say, I put it in the comments, I don't have no, no problem with the process that was done. I really, really don't, Mayor. I just was expecting to be able to see the report so I could read in detail before we actually got to City Council. So I don't want you to think that I don't have, you know, that I had a problem with the process.
I didn't.
Because I just trust the process.
Thank you very much. And I didn't, I didn't hear anything less than that and I appreciate that. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, uh, and we'll call the vote to table this resolution until, uh, a follow-up meeting, which we will conduct via Zoom on Friday to afford council members an opportunity to see, um, a co, a copy of a proposed contract. And if there's any other information that you wish to see, um, then councilmen, members will let us know to make sure we get that to you. And in the meantime, we'll get with Madam Clerk to, um, set up the, uh, Zoom meeting on Friday. Good deal.
We have to have a meeting because we have to vote. My question, uh, to Mr. Wheatley, would, how far out could we go and still meet that timeline that we need to make sure that we can get the equipment in and all of that? So just want to make sure we're not pushing it back too far. Do we need to have a meeting a little bit sooner on Wednesday or?
I, I think every hour is important. Um, now there's a gentleman here from Cards. He may, he may want to come up and address that more specifically. But they've got, um, they've got fifteen thousand carts to, to order and get in here and have delivered and make that seamless. They've got, um, several hundred, uh, commercial carts as well as all new trucks. So uh, that's
If I could go ahead and recognize you. Well, I'm sorry. Tell me your, Cody, last name?
Yandel.
Yanthel?
Yandel.
Yan, Yandell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Yandell.
Uh, thank you for the question. Thank you guys for the opportunity to be here in front of you guys tonight to, uh, echo Mr. Wheatley's um, sentiment on that every hour is vital in that. Um, not to hold any pressure to you guys by any means. Friday, I think we would be okay. Wednesday would be ideal, but.
So what is the, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday. So what would be the shortest window, Councilmember? Um, if, and I'm just thinking about my calendar too, um, possibly Thursday, early, maybe an early meeting Thursday. Councilmember? It'd have to be. Uh, I think I could do. Thursday, would Thursday evening?
We can make that work. Yes.
Okay. Cause I imagine if we do something Friday, that then cuts in at a time where you would have to wait till the next week to take any action.
Correct. We'd be submitting orders on Monday.
Okay. Would Thursday evening work? Wait, is that what you said? Thursday? We could do it at six. Let's do it at six. Oh, cause I'm, I'm mindful that if we move forward with this, the way I think it will, once you see the information, then we don't want them to be in a position where they have to wait till the weekend to start moving ahead of a schedule with regard to the purchasing of all of this equipment so that it can be a smooth transition. Okay. Okay, Thursday? So you want to amend it again? amend your Thursday at six P M? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we will, uh, table this item until such time that we meet again in person, uh, on Thursday at six. That's my birthday too. No, that's okay. On Thursday at six P M.
Can I take a second to introduce our general manager?
Please.
His name's Curtis Lovell. He will be the general manager of this area and, and he's already in this market. So just wanted to introduce him and hand the mic over to him for just a second.
For sure.
Definitely not a public speaker. Yeah, I'm an operations guy, so, uh, don't expect too much. But you mentioned earlier, uh, who you're gonna call on a Friday night? That's me. My number's four seven nine eight seven nine zero nine nine seven. And
Can you repeat that, please?
It's four seven nine eight seven nine zero nine nine seven. It's Curtis Lovell. And the difference is, you call me, I'm gonna come get your trash. It doesn't matter what time. So
Uh, Council, Council Clerk, Madam Clerk has it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we'll table until Thursday at six P M. We'll call the question. All those in agreeance to, um, vote yes to table this res- resolution number seven indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and file of record with the Jefferson County Arkansas deeds recorder, a notice of property development decision document and a declarat- declaration of restrictive covenants in agreement with Arkansas Division of Environmental Quality, A D E Q concerning the real property with a street address of twenty oh one South Ohio Street, impound of Arkansas, former site of Southeast Middle School.
Whereas the city is the owner of the real estate with a street address of two thousand one South Ohio Street, which was the site of the former Southeast Middle School. And whereas the city plans to utilize the property as the site of residential housing for low to medium income residents. And whereas on March thirty first, twenty twenty two, the city with respect to the property submitted its intent to participate in the Arkansas Brownfield program and obtain ownership of the property. And the prop, and, and whereas the property was accepted into the program on April fourth, twenty twenty two. And whereas inspection of the property, uh, upon inspection of the property discovered that a portion thereof contained contaminants requiring remedial action to eliminate or contain the risk posed by the contaminants. And an implementing agreement concerning the cleanup of the contaminants was entered into on November fifteenth, twenty twenty three. And whereas after study, A D E Q issued a property development decision document dated March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, which outlines the required remedial action. And whereas the city will comply with the decision of A D E Q and execute and file the notice of property development decision document as amended to implementing agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants respecting the property in the deeds records of Jefferson County, Arkansas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city agrees with ADEQ's determination set for in the property development decision document and the attachments thereto, which are incorporated herein as if fully set forth. Section 2, that the mayor is authorized and directed to complete the attached notice of property development decision document as an amendment to the implementing agreement and declaration of restrictive covenant, covenants documents. Confirmed said documents are in the form approved by ADEQ and then file the approved documents in the deed of records of Jefferson County, Arkansas. The city clerk will attest the mayor's signature as needed. Said documents are incorporated herein as if fully set forth.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number eight be adopted. So let me do my process, please. Any discussion? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, just want clarification.
So this is based upon a grant, a Brownsville grant. And we met with them probably a week and a half ago. And this was the one. If you look in the title, it's basically a declaration of restrictive covenant. So it allows them to continue their, their work and research around this Brownsville grant without. I can't, I don't know the word to describe, but can you, Madam, Madam Attorney, give Councilmember Mays a description of what this does?
Well, I can tell you. I can tell you.
Council Attorney Joe?
There was no gas station on the corner. And they, when they did the test, determined there was some residue left from the old gas station about the tanks, you know, on the ground. So we're disagreeing that about this restrictive covenant that we won't allow any use of water around that area to make sure nobody gets poisoned. That's pretty much it.
No, we're agreeing with them. We're saying, we're saying that they can do their work. I just, I can't, I don't know how to describe what exactly what a restrictive covenant is, but we're letting them do their work.
It's, it just restricts the use of the property to, to the end that we cannot use any groundwater from that area.
We can't use any groundwater from that area. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, with no further questions. All those in agreeance to vote for this resolution number eight indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number nine, a resolution setting the millage for the fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas it is desired to fix and levy the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for the purpose of creating and maintaining a fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And whereas it is further desired that the same be certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 and for the purpose of creating and maintaining a fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas as provided for in Act 16, 1941, be and the same as hereby fixed and levied at one mil on the dollar of the assessed value of said property with the said tax to be a special tax and to be in addition to all other taxes. Be it further resolved that the rate of levy of taxation herein provided and levied be forthwith certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas as provided by law to the end that the amount so certified shall be placed on the tax books and collected in the same manner as state and county taxes are collected.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and seconded that we will adopt resolution number 10. Any discussion? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number nine. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in agreement to vote for the adoption of resolution number nine indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 10, a resolution setting the millage for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas it is desired to fix and levy the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for the purpose of creating and maintaining a policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And whereas it is further desired that the same be certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for the purpose of creating and maintaining a policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas as provided for in Act 16 of 1941, be and the same as hereby fixed and levied at one mil on the dollar of the assessed value of said property with the said tax to be a special tax and in addition to all other taxes. Be it further resolved that the rate of levy taxation herein provided and levied be forthwith certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas as provided by law to the, to the end that the amount so certified shall be placed upon the tax books and collected in the same manner as state and county taxes are collected.
Move for adoption?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 11 be adopted. Any discussion? I'm sorry, I keep getting ahead of myself. That resolution number 10 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting yes for the adoption of resolution number 10 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 11, a resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas it is now declared, desired to fix and levy the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law. And whereas it is further desired that the same be certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for general purposes as authorized by the statutes of the state of Arkansas as so provided by Arkansas Code, Section 2673202, is hereby fixed and levied at five mils on the dollar of the assessed value of said property in addition to all other taxes. Be it further resolved that the rate of levy of taxation herein provided and levied be forthwith certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas as provided by law to the, to the end that the amount so certified shall be placed upon the tax books and collected in the same manner as state and county taxes are collected.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 11 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in agreement to vote yes for the adoption of resolution 11 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 12, a resolution setting the millage for the operation and maintenance of the Pine Bluff Public Library.
Whereas it is now desired to fix and levy the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for the purposes of creating a fund to be used for the operation and maintenance of the Pine Bluff, Arkansas Public Library. And whereas it is further desired that the same be certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the rate of taxation of all real and personal property within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas for the year 2025 for the purpose of creating a fund to be used for the operation and maintenance of the Pine, Pine Bluff Public Library authorized by the City Council on March 2nd, 1942 and as provided for in the city general elections of April 7, 1942, April 3rd, 1945, and November 8, 1988. And as provided for in the special election of August 27, 1996 and as provided for in the general election of November 8, 2016, be and the same as hereby fixed and levied at four and six tenths mil on the dollar of the assessed value of said property with the said tax to be a special tax and in addition to all other taxes. Be it further resolved that the rate of levy of taxation herein provided and levied be forthwith certified to the county clerk of Jefferson County, Arkansas as provided by law to the end that the amount so certified shall be placed upon the tax books and collected in the same manner as the state and county taxes are collected.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded that resolution number 12 be adopted. Any discussion? All of those in support to vote yes to adopt resolution number 12 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we will read the announcements. There are five announcements. The first, mark your calendars. The Pine Bluff, Jefferson County, UAPB AMN alumni chapter will host its 2025 Scholarship Gala on Friday, September 12th at 6:30 P.M. at the Pine Bluff Convention Center. This year's theme is Journey of Knowledge, Empowering Minds, Igniting Futures. Tickets are $40 a person with the table sponsorships available for $400 and souvenir booklet ads ranging from $15 to $150. Deadline is August 15th. Oh, it was August 15th. For tickets or sponsorship information, contact Shannon Hendricks at 870718-3472 or Tina Owens at 870692-3099. And I believe our city clerk is being honored at that event. Item two, Second Saturday Family Fun Day is free and open to the public. The Art Times Three Campuses Second Saturday Family Fun Day Program offers monthly hands-on arts and science activities in which visitors create art, complete science projects, or perform dance, music, or theater. Activities complement current art or science exhibitions. Activities are free and led by visiting artists, local art educators, educators, and staff. Questions, contact Shaquilla Rahman, Programs Director, sraman@artx3.org, 8705363375. Item number three, in honor of the Gospel Music Heritage Month, Music Moves presents an annual gospel celebration every September in Arkansas. Gospel Celebrations has featured gospel award-winning artists like Fred Hammond, Byron Cage, Arkansas Gospel Mass Choir, Leandria Johnson, and Lamar Campbell. Gospel Celebration is hosted by board member and Grammy-winning educator, Dr. Jeffrey Murdock. This year's Arkansas Gospel Music Heritage Month celebration will take place on September 13th, 11 to 3:30 at the New Life Church at 2801 South Olive, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and on September 14th, 6:00 P.M. at First Assembly of God at 1002 Ridgeway Road, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Item four, The Taste of Southeast Arkansas in benefit of the Jefferson County Young Professionals Network will be Thursday, September 18, 2025, 6:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. Location, Pine Bluff Convention Center. Fees, admission. To be announced at a later date, contact Jamal Gordon, 8705350110. And finally, on Friday and Saturday, September 19th and 20th, Pine Bluff, Arkansas will host Tour de Bluff. Tour de Bluff was created for people of all ages to learn fun, safe ways to enjoy bicycling. Anyone can participate, those who are just learning to ride a bicycle, those who ride regularly, and those who haven't been on a bicycle since they were kids. To participate in Tour de Bluff 2025 onsite, register online at www.tourdebluff.com. Click the Event Day Registration button and select your route. Check-in and Start will be in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, starting 8:00 a.m., September 20, 2025. Ride your selected route using safe riding practices. Early packet pickup will be Friday, September 19, 2025. And with that, I will adjourn so we can hear our public comments that are non-agenda items. Motion to adjourn. Has been, it's been moved and seconded that we will adjourn. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in agreement, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Okay. And I don't believe that Crystal Green is here. She was on the list. And so we have Mr. Henry Maxwell to speak. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Henry Maxwell, Jr. My concern is information. I inquired information of the finance department in person by text as well as email, asking how many departments in the city, Pine Bluff City, does the mayor oversee? And how many slots does each department have? And how many slots are presently filled? What is the budget for each city department? And I asked, is there an emergency fund for the city? And how much is set aside and maintained in the emergency fund? And how soon can I get this information from your office? I requested this about a week or so ago. How much more time will I need before I can get this information? I did it by in-person, by text as well as email to Ms. Devers.
Thank you. Attorney Scott, how long do people have? I know it's less than a week, but how long do people have for FOIA requests?
It's just, uh, yet I asked a couple of things. I asked, how many departments in the city does the mayor's office oversee? How many slots does each department have? And how many slots are presently filled? Then I asked how, what is the budget for each department in the city?
Most of that would be in the budget. Everything is not necessarily clear about what's under the mayor because. So that's the only thing that I would say is not contained in the budget. And I think you asked about an emergency fund. You would be able to see that in terms of reserves.
Okay, so when I stopped, so when I stopped by the office, was she not able to print it out for me?
Well, if it's. Well, but this is what I'm saying, because there is a process for FOIA, and that wasn't the process.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, so the, the process for FOIA, for a FOIA request would to be to indicate that it's a FOIA request to whatever agency that you're wanting the information from, and then they have a process to get it to you. What I'm telling you though, is you don't have to do that. Everything you ask for is contained in a budget, and I would be happy to make sure that you get that link sent to you tonight. The only thing that is not clear is that there are 17 departments. That's specifically under the mayor's office, and we can respond to you so you can know specifically what those agencies are. But we'll send you the link, and if, uh, my chief of staff is right there. If you, in the morning. the morning.
What's your name?
She, she has your card. You can go ahead and.
What's your name? Ms. Cal.
But, but can you also give her your information?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I think that is it, everybody. This is the dedicated crew who stayed right here. Thank you all very much. Bye-bye.